We call the meeting to order for the Board of Aldermen for the City of Warrenton for September 4, 2012. First item on the agenda is a place of allegiance. I ask that everybody stands and Alderman Tallow will lead the place.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's a tribute of our league for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I get started, I want to amend the agenda on item 13A. I want to remove that from the agenda and that's not going to be up for discussion tonight. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the regular Board of Aldermen meeting minutes for August 7th and August 21st, 2012. Any questions or additions or corrections?
I was in there for the 7th, I was here for the 14th.
Okay. You're just abstaining on that vote. We'll do that two separate votes.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of our board meeting of July 17.
You're on the wrong. We're doing August. I tell you what, Alderman Clark, I'm going to break those apart because Alderman Tallow wasn't here, so let's just do the August 7th one first.
How did I get to July?
Maybe you got the wrong.
Did you get the, you got this agenda?
You don't have to wait for me, we can keep going.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular Board of Aldermen meeting of August 7th, 2012.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the Board of Aldermen minutes from August 7th. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Dreyer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
I'm staying, I was out of town.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with one abstention and one absence. Now I entertain a motion on August 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallow, approved by Alderman Clark to approve the August 21st Board of Aldermen minutes. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero, one absence. Now I entertain a motion for the work session minutes from August 7th, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to approve the work session minutes from August 7th, 2012. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
I'm staying.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer.
Yes.
Did you get Alderman Flake?
Oh, sorry, Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with one abstention, one absence. Next item is item C, work session minutes from August 14th, 2012, special events.
Make a motion we approve the work session minutes from August 14th, 2012 on the special events.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to approve the work session minutes from August 14th, 2012, special events. Roll call please.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
I'm staying, I was not present.
Motion carried four to zero with one absence and one abstention. Item 3D, open minutes from the special meeting on August 28th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the open minutes from the special meeting on August 28th. Roll call please.
Alderman Clark.
I'm staying, I was not present.
Alderman Dreyer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero, one absence, one abstention. As the public can see, August, we were busy. We had a lot of meetings that month, so these guys, the board earned their keep that month. Item four, hearing from the public, at this time we extend the courtesy to anyone from the public that would like to address the board. We ask that you come forward to the podium, state your name, and present your topic. We ask you keep it five minutes or less. Melody kind of has a timer and she will notify us if we've gone over the five minutes. So, anyone that would like to address us, please do so at this time.
Hi, my name is Carmen Lucas. My husband Mike and some of my children and some of the other neighborhood children and Tracy. We all live in a subdivision here in Warrenton and all of our children are in FFA. Some of them, this is their second year. But, we had our first FFA meeting last month and the children watched YouTube videos on the Board of Aldermen meeting, so I want to thank you guys for having those on YouTube. That's very interesting for us to see. They had no idea about the process with FFA and how, you know, how they do the roll call like you do here, how the minutes are passed, how they get things approved, and they saw the similarities. So, over the weekend, we were having barbecues in the neighborhood and they started asking a lot of questions and we thought it might be a good idea to let them come and ask the questions. I know this is a little off kilter from what this is usually about, but I wanted to do it while I had their attention and their nerves. So, I have got some questions here that some of the other children had written, but they unexpectedly got company today and could not come, so I was going to speak for them. They're just general questions that they were curious about that they could have looked up probably on the internet, but I thought it might be more to be person to person, you know, like in the real world instead of not on the computer. The first question they ask is, what are the qualifications to be on the Board of Aldermen? I don't know if anybody...
Anybody want to?
You have to be a resident of the city for at least a year, and I believe you have to be 21.
They just changed the law to make it 18.
Oh, 18 now?
Cannot be in arrears in any of your municipal taxes or municipal bills or anything like that.
Okay, hopefully at 18 they wouldn't, huh?
I'm sorry?
I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
Yeah, they just changed, it was 21, now it's 18.
Okay, so there is no college education or anything required? Okay, alright. They were concerned that they may not get to do this because one of them's, he's planning on being a construction worker and so he thought he would be excluded from that. How are the public's wishes conveyed to the Board of Aldermen, to the member that is in their ward?
Well, a variety of different ways. We have three different wards within the City of Warrenton. I mean, you guys get information different ways. Maybe a neighbor walks across the street, maybe a phone call at night, maybe they write him a letter, so, all kinds of ways that they can convey their wishes to the board.
Okay, okay.
We're pretty accessible to the public, I think we are.
Okay, so is it best to address the whole board or just the person who is in, over your ward?
A lot of times the problems can be solved if you just address your Aldermen and your ward. If you contact, you know, each ward has two Aldermen. If you contact one of those Aldermen, a lot of times they can handle it and take care of it. I mean, if it goes beyond that, then maybe the entire board would want to hear that.
Okay, okay. This one's kind of a cute question because this is, this is a military child who's going to plan on going to the military who's asking this question, but he's a little too nervous to stand up in public. He, very interested in the elections and things that's going on because he's open up to vote now, and, you know, we're talking about the president and who's under the president. The question came about is, you're the mayor, so is, are you, he wanted to know if you were considered the head of the Aldermen. Are you like the boss over the Aldermen?
I don't think so. I think I'm kind of the cheerleader for the, for the city.
Okay.
As they can witness and see, I have no voting powers. Only these six people have voting powers, so I can lead and suggest and try to direct, but no, I don't look at myself as the authority over them.
Okay. Who does, who does the Board of Aldermen answer to if their decisions are divided? In other words, if you have divided conflict, who makes the final decision? Is that...
Well, if there is, like I say, it's a three to three vote, then the mayor would vote.
Okay.
He would break the tie.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Ultimately, the answer to the voters, because we're all in elected positions, and so ultimately, if we make enough people mad and make the wrong decisions, we're probably going to be voted out of office.
Okay, so it's like the voters are the boss?
That's absolutely, that's a good point.
Okay. What are the, what are some of the advantages and disadvantages of being on the board? Just an example.
Time's up.
We'll give her a little more leeway because she's asking questions for, for other people. So, who wants to answer that?
I didn't hear the question.
What are, what are some of the advantages and disadvantages being on the Board of Aldermen? Just an example.
I knew, I will tell you that I've gotten my eyes open to, I thought that I was pretty savvy politically and, and knew what was going on. I don't. One of the advantages that I have is an ability to serve the community. I think that that's probably why everybody is on here.
Okay.
And you get to make connections with people and receive input and trying to put those, that input into play.
Okay, good, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We answered the right stuff.
Alright, I'll go first. I am Caitlin Moore. Alright, I have a couple questions, so, well, more than a couple, but the FFA has a motto. Does the Board of Aldermen have a motto or creed that states their promise or oath to the community?
We, we all take an oath of office when we, when we are sworn in to accept our responsibilities, but beyond that, I'm not aware of any.
Okay, sweet. Is there any kind of dress code for you guys?
I don't think there is a set dress code, but I think everybody tries to at least keep business casual or above.
I think so.
Okay.
Especially in the summer months when it's hot and, you know, we're not into the coat and tie season.
Is there a Board of Aldermen members responsible for the city's budget?
All of us.
All of us.
Does the Board of Aldermen take cast into, oh, I can't read this, sorry, I'm like out of it, to the consideration with all of their decisions regarding the budgets?
I didn't hear the first part of that question.
Sorry. Does the Board of Aldermen take cast into consideration with all the decisions regarding the budget?
Everything has to, you, take cost into consideration.
Okay.
Absolutely, you have to, we only have X dollars, and there's generally more projects I would, I was going to say this, you'll be funded most of the capital expenditure, but there are different funds that are able to be tapped for different projects also.
Okay. What does the Board of Aldermen do and try to save for the city's money?
Well, we hope we're spending it wisely. One of the things I think you'll, and you'll probably see tonight, now we took it off the agenda, but, but most expenditures, we require bids, and, and we'd like to have at least three bids to make sure we're getting the best deal on things, so I think we're pretty careful about spending the taxpayers' dollars.
Okay, thanks. What does the Board of, like, what is the Board of Aldermen, like, how does it compare to the city's council?
I bet you it's one of the same, isn't it?
Yeah, very similar, just a different terminology, and I think we operate pretty much the same as a, as a city council.
Different classes, different class cities call them something different.
Typically constitutional charter cities that have their own constitution as a city have a city council. Fourth, third-class cities, villages, all have boards of trustees or boards of Aldermen.
Is there an Alderman, a civil servant like the police or fire department?
Say that again.
Civil servants?
Yeah.
Like civil servants, like the fires?
Yeah, sorry.
Well, we're, we're servants to the community that we serve, yes.
Okay.
Do we fall under the same as civil service? I don't think so.
No.
Okay, the last one. How are the wards divided and like who's in charge of that ward?
Well, there's three wards and there's two Aldermen per ward, and really no Aldermen is like over the other Aldermen, is that what you're asking? Now, the board has a board president, but they're really not over the board either. They just, they're just the board president to try to make things more cohesive at different times if need be.
So there's no person like selected to be in it, like, you're in ward two and you're in ward one?
It's divided geographically.
And you have to live, you have to live within that ward.
Oh, okay.
If that makes sense.
Alrighty, thank you guys for your time.
The wards are divided up population-wise, you know, where we have, try to get the same number of voters in each ward, so. Good question.
Thank you guys.
Hi, my name's Olivia Lucas, and I would kind of like have a few questions, but I like to be in the community, and so I kind of wanted to be on the Board of Aldermen just as a thought. But, if I show up and get in trouble with the law, does it affect my ability to be on the Board of Aldermen meeting? Just to be in the Board of Aldermen?
I don't believe there's any provisions.
I mean, if you're already a board member, or if you've already been like in trouble and you want to be...
Like, if you've already been in trouble, like with the law?
I don't think so. It all depends if people still want to vote for you.
Like, not that I've said that, I've been in trouble.
It's all, it's all voted the people within your ward when you want to run.
A criminal conviction will not preclude you from being on the Board of Aldermen.
Okay. And, how important is a person's reputation if they want to become an Alderman?
I think it's paramount.
I didn't hear that first part, I'm sorry.
Is, how important is it, how important is your reputation to be on the Board of Aldermen?
To become, to become, I think that your reputation is what gives you credibility, that you can, you can convince people to vote for you and convince people that you can do the job in honest way.
Okay. Does the Board of Aldermen decide who is hired in the police department?
Who's hired?
Yeah.
These six people have, have the authority to hire and fire people.
Okay.
We take recommendations from the department heads, or in this case, from the chief, and then we go from there, but again, it's our decision.
Okay. Does the Board of Aldermen, like, over the police?
Yes.
So, can a Board of Aldermen meeting, I mean, can a Board of Aldermen member get out of a ticket or like?
No.
Just get out of trouble because they're over the police? Okay, that's...
We haven't figured that out yet.
Okay, well, that's all my question.
Thank you for asking that.
That was a very good question, I like...
Everybody knows that same thing.
That's the perception anyway.
My name's Michael Wade, and I got one question for you guys, like, for say if I wanted to become like the, if I want to be one of the Board of Aldermen, how much would I get paid?
You guys get paid?
Not the big bucks. I believe it's currently...
This, right now, is 400 a month.
400 a month? Really?
Yeah.
Is that good or bad?
So, it's like, just like a hobby for you guys?
It's my only job.
It's not a job that would feed a family, I don't think.
Yeah.
They work pretty cheap when we figure out how many hours they put in and...
But that, that varies from city to city.
Yeah? Alright.
So, they're donating a lot of time to the community, so, thank you guys for your questions.
I guess it's a good question.
Very good questions, very entertaining. Glad you're interested in the... Very much so.
Policy.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Next item on my agenda is the comments for the Board of Aldermen. Does anybody have anything you would like to share with the public or bring forward at this time?
I think this is great, this is a positive thing. I like to see young people involved like this, so thanks for coming.
Yep.
It really, it makes me feel good anyway, so thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thanks for having us.
Not, not hearing any comments, at this time, the, I get my chance to speak, and I've, I've only got one thing I want to share with the public, and I know there's been some concern about catch the glow within the community, and one of the things that Terry and I have done here this past week, we did send letters out to all the civic and service organizations, kind of advising on what we did as a city, that we want to take a year off and step back away from catch the glow. We offered our support, we encouraged them to step forward and let us know if they would like to take on the project. So far, I haven't had any feedback. Have you had anything yet?
Not at all.
We hope we hear back from some groups and hopefully somebody will step forward and, and pick up that agenda, so, that's all I have. Next item on the agenda tonight is the request for exemption for time constrained for loud and unusual noise disturbances by the Fair Board for the mud bog on September 8th, 2012, until midnight. Does someone want to address that issue?
Jim, could we get you to come forward here to the podium?
Yeah. Two dates on there. Yeah.
It's kind of hard to read.
September 8th and October 6th, it looks like.
The one on the September 8th is the mud bog is for the donation to the, or the, the band is doing that for a fundraiser so they can go to, I believe it's Florida is where they're going.
Okay.
And, so they get the gate money off of that, we run the food stand and the beer garden and...
Oh, we didn't get your name for the record.
I'm sorry, I'm Jim Cobb and I'm a member of the Fair Board.
So, so September 8th, that mud bog is, is in conjunction with the high school bands?
With the high school band, yes.
Okay.
They, they come to us and wanted to use that for a fundraiser and, and some of them's got kids in the band that's got the mud trucks.
Sure.
So, we, we agreed to let them do that, and then the 6th is just a demolition derby that we've done for years in the fall. We do want to follow one in the spring.
Okay.
So, and I expect both of them to be over the way before midnight, but we need to make sure.
Those are the only two items that, that you're asking for an exception for the noise issue?
Yes.
Is that mud bug?
Bog.
Bog. B-O-G.
I'll make a motion that we allow the September 8th mud bog till midnight, and October 6th, the demo derby also till midnight, to extend the hours so they can have it till that time.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the mud bog on September 8th until midnight, and approve the demolition derby on October 6th, 2012 until midnight. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Dreyer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one absence.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim. Next item on the agenda is parking spaces on Boonslick in front of the post office. That's, that's, this item is on there at my request. One of the things that I continually hear in the community is how dangerous it is when people try to pass in front of the post office when there's a car parked along Main Street or Highway Y. I've seen tractor, tractor trailer trucks parked there, and when they're parked there, you can't have two cars meeting and passing them, so I wanted to bring this up for discussion. You know, we, we got the lot next door that the city owns that the post office is kind of utilizing for their employees and so forth. I, I thought it would be worth a discussion to see what the, the board thinks and feels about it. I might even ask Chief Hottishell, is that an issue for you all with the police department?
You know, the interesting thing there is, and I'm not going to wood, we've never worked a crash in front of there or seen anybody get hit there, but just as sure as I'm sitting here saying that, it's going to happen. It's not that it hasn't been that close to happening. I am all in favor of making it have no parking in front of there, because it is a very dangerous situation.
And I hear these horror stories all the time about cars coming by, all of a sudden the door opens up where somebody's getting out, going in the post office.
It happens a lot, and if it were not for defensive drivers paying attention right in front of there, I'm sure we'd have a lot...
A scary deal. I, I think, I, I think with the overflow of people over on the city lot now, I think there are more parking places available within the post office, with the exception of early in the morning when, when all the roll carriers are loading their trucks and cars, there's a lot of them in there, and it might be a little tough to get in there once in a while, but I, I think more of a safety issue than anything else. We need to give that some thought and, and serious consideration, so. Any comments from the board on it?
I actually fielded a complaint about a week ago and contacted Mrs. Thorne. The suggestion made at that point was to remove the grass island between Main Street and the sidewalk and create parking spots there. That individual said that he was driving a motor grader, I believe for the county, down Main Street, and had he not seen this person opening the door, he would have absolutely...
Did it off?
Yeah, it would have been a serious situation. That was his recommendation, and Mrs. Thorne said that we were already going to discuss it on this meeting, the parking lot. My only other concern is, I was there this morning about 8:00, and I was there about 10:30 this morning in both times, probably half of the parking spots were taken up by mail vehicles, and I, I would certainly encourage the postal service to park their vehicles on the gravel and hopefully the, the customers can get a little bit closer to the building.
I have seen some close calls there with people throwing their door open and two vehicles moving there at the same time, so, it's a dangerous situation. I agree, something should be done there. No parking or whatever we decide to do.
Alderman Clark, any concerns with that issue?
I don't know how our talks were going along with the post office leasing that property. At one point we were looking at doing something, or leasing a part of it.
They're not doing well. Because I've been assigned that duty to keep contact with the postmaster, and, and our issue is the, the people in charge of this is, are out of state, and, and he has trouble getting anybody to return his calls or emails or letters, so we're not, we haven't progressed at all with that issue.
The other concern might be, if we are now going to eliminate two parking spots out front, encouraging the use of that gravel parking lot, what are our plans for, eventually the, the gravel lot is going to degrade and need maintenance, it's obvious that they're not going to be interested in leasing it as long as we're allowing the use of it, which I, I think is the right thing to do, but we're going to have to keep in mind the, the maintenance of that lot.
Cost, no removal. But I think the intent originally was that we would pay that lot, and that's when we were progressing with maybe getting the post office to lease the property from us, and we could use the lease to help offset the cost of paving the lot and so forth, but I don't think we want to spend any money paving the lot when we're, when the post office is not willing to sign a lease with us, so.
Well, my, my concern is maybe it's better to have them use the parking lot, the postal carriers or the post office, I mean, the people, I have no problem with it, I want to go into the post office, but we're allowing the post office to use that lot as if it's theirs, why, why lease it if you're already using it?
Already using it.
Yeah, they're not going to lease it.
Of course, are we, are we creating a bigger problem by not letting them use it? It's a lot of safety issue.
Is the public aware they can use that also?
Well, there's...
I mean, because, you know, if they're not leasing it, it's not like it's their parking lot to use only, so the public should be able to use it also.
I think we're letting anybody park there.
I mean, I just hope, I just hope the public knows that though, that's all.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I'm thinking they may think that's just for the, you know, for the post office employees.
Is, is there any... Is there any access to it off of Main Street or do you have to go through the parking lot and into the alley?
Off of the street.
No, it's up Main Street.
Is there one from the old house?
The old driveway to the old house.
Any other concerns with it? Alderman Dreyer, I haven't heard from you.
Usually don't, but...
Man, if you weren't...
I guess what my suggestion might be, ask the chief to look at it a little closer and maybe come back at next meeting and give us a recommendation on what do you think we should do with that? I mean, if it means no parking and putting signs up or, or tell us what we would really need to do to solve the safety issue there.
I got a question. Is that something that we need to let the post office know too? Maybe if they know that we're not going to allow, possibly allow parking there, then maybe they'll think twice about maybe not what we rent that. Maybe they can allow...
What about a time limit on parking?
Right.
Something like that?
What?
Or they, like a 30-minute time limit on parking on the lot?
Oh, on that lot or something?
On the lot, yeah.
I think all that's going to do, Alderman Clark, yeah, I know what you're saying, but I think all that's going to do is cause them to park their mail vehicles on the paved parking lot and customers are going to be relegated to the gravel lot.
That's pretty much what they're doing now because they can't push their carts with mail.
I'll, I'll be happy to talk to the postmaster and let him know what we're considering and see how they, you know, feel about it. That'd be an opportunity for me to touch bases with them one more about the lease, once more, so I'll be happy to do that.
Of course, like you said, when they're dealing with out of state, it's not good, but...
The post office is...
Short of monies.
Short of monies.
Yeah. That's good suggestion.
Okay, so is that fine with you, chief?
Sure.
That you take a look at it?
Absolutely.
See what, what recommendation you bring us, bring back to the board. Any other questions about it? Then we're going to move on to item nine. Director of Operations Finance Officer, Mary Thorne.
My first item for you this evening is a request to pay the accounts payable from last month. The total is $222,280.35.
See, we spent a lot of money, don't we, in one month?
I make a motion to approve the accounts payable.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Tallow, to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $222,280.35. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flack?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
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 Motion carried, five, zero with one absent. Special events.
And special events is my next topic and just a question for you. We did have a meeting and talked about Catch the Glow. My question is, do you want to further consider additional changes to special events as we start to look toward recruiting for this position? Maybe we don't want to change anything and leave the revised list as it stands, or maybe we want to consider changing or amending some of the special events programs.
So, the ones you have listed here, like the Sweetheart Dance?
That's the revised list that you approved at the prior meeting.
And I'll just read these off, the Sweetheart Dance for the public, the Egg Hunt, the MLB Pitch Hit and Run, Farmer's Market, Fishing Derby, British Soccer Camp, Pool Party for Baseball Softball, T-Ball League, Citywide Yard Sale, Picnic for Soccer League, Auto Fest, Go Fish Grab, NFL Punch Pass, Kick Circus, Adult Kickball Tournament. Have we had that adult kickball tournament before?
No.
Is that a new thing?
This would be the first year for it and we have taken that off of the list for this year. We're just not prepared to do that and have no registrations. So, we could certainly consider putting it back on next year or leave it off or any of the other events that are listed. Probably the largest event still on the list is the Auto Fest in September. Some of the others are fairly small events.
Do we have anything coming up that's going to be pushing us in the, in the near future?
No.
My own thought would be let's, I understand that recruitment of that position may change the abilities or the focus, but I'd rather myself get the person and then define the, define the position around their abilities to that, to the special events portion.
We can certainly do that.
See what their qualifications are?
Yeah.
And understandable.
They may have, they may have big ideas of special events that are more geared towards athletics even.
Well, I know one of the things that has been discussed by tourism is encouraging some tournaments at the complex, so that may be something that we'll want to add to the list at some point in the future.
I would agree on that.
Okay, so leave it and just evaluate later?
The other comment? Okay.
The next item I have for you is the approval of two policies. Both of these have been in place with several discussions, but honestly, we couldn't find a specific approval date on either one of them, so wanted to bring them back. The first is the Street Creep policy. This is something that has been in place for a number of years and discusses what the actions are that the city will take if this Street Creep instance occurs. The city will actually make the saw cuts in the driveway, remove the concrete and refill the gap with hot mix asphalt in an attempt to cause the problem not to get any worse, as I understand it. The second is a stormwater management inspection policy. This is a little bit different than what we had. It wasn't called specifically a stormwater management and it was much more of just a procedural type thing, not really a policy. Jack actually put this together based upon what the DNR, some of it is the DNR requirements, and I think he can probably better explain than I can what all that involves, but this is to make sure that we are staying on top of stormwater projects that have stormwater management in place to make sure that they are being regularly inspected. And for events like the rains of last weekend, making sure that all of those precautions remain there and are in the operable format so that we don't have unnecessary stormwater running where it's not supposed to. So, this is really a policy related to it, replacing what was kind of just a very minimal procedure, but requiring regular inspections to happen.
So, we need a motion to approve those two additions or changes?
If the board approves those, yes.
I've got, the waste or the stormwater, I don't have any issues or questions with. The Street Creep, I wish Guy was here. My understanding is that is when a piece of concrete expands and pushes up against the other piece of concrete and buckles, correct?
Go ahead.
I've learned a lot about Street Creep.
Jim, Jim Bay would try to explain to me, but...
Basically, what we've learned about it was, it is essentially where, where we see it in the municipal context is where a home builder cheats up and they don't put sufficient felting or space or expansion material in place to a point where it starts pushing up against the foundation, like a driveway that goes directly into a foundation. And they don't put, you know, essentially sufficient expansion cracks or expansion areas in so that the only way you can really relieve the pressure is not by cutting the foundation, is to cut or eliminate some of the street and fill in some asphalt. So, that's where we see it and really the main place where we deal with Street Creep.
So, we would be cutting out the area by the, of the driveway where it butts up to the street?
Correct. And it's, it's a simple thing where they cut out a little part and then they fill it in with asphalt and it gives it some spongy flexibility to deal with it.
My, the only thing that doesn't make sense about that is, I think it was either last meeting or the meeting before, we, we approved a policy where we wouldn't put hot mix in where we replaced the culvert, but here it seems like we're, we're doing about the same thing for another issue and it's an issue that was created by inadequately designed or installed. I, I just don't think it's consistent to say, well, hot mix it on, if it's Street Creep, but if it's a culvert issue, we're not going to, we'll just put gravel in it and, and leave it. I don't...
Inadequately designed and installed was my opinion.
Okay.
That's my opinion of it. I agree with it, Street Creep is completely that, but that's my opinion of it.
Either way, it, it seems that we are being inconsistent with when we will replace the surface.
But isn't this true?
Yeah, I mean, this is a minimal size cut, whereas a culvert could be a fairly large size cut is the only real answer that I, I have for you.
Well, my, so is this just a, is this just a cut or are they cutting out a section that says that their removal of the existing concrete?
They do the approach slab that comes straight out the street.
Right, so they're going to take out the...
It's not the whole thing. It's a very small...
Just a width, John, maybe four inches.
No, from the back of the curve. It's not six to 12 inches wide.
Maybe four to six inches is all, but the whole width, yeah. But it can only be, what, 10 feet?
Approximately six to 12 inches from the back of the existing curve.
It's making a saw cut across.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a saw cut.
It's not six to 12 inches, yeah.
They're only, they're only making a saw cut. They're not going to take out the six to 12 inches in between.
Right.
They're not.
No.
That's certainly not what this...
I'm a little confused on it too, because I know years ago we've talked about it and it was basically the driveways that went downhill and our streets were leaning that way and it was pushing on the driveways into the foundations.
Well, but...
Not so much coming out into the street.
The, it is pushing on the foundation, but what we've done, when you really look at it and you research the issue, it is an issue with every, there's a lot of cities that have Street Creep policies. It's an issue with the design or the installation of the driveway. It has nothing to do with the expansion of our streets because it is, when they like pour the driveway, they're not putting the expansion space in and when the concrete expands, it's stuck between the street and the foundation and it pushes into the foundation and also pushes in the street. So, there is some advantage to us by doing this because we do get some advantage off our street, but it's not a city-created issue. I have not found a situation where the city's street has created a Street Creep issue because if you put the expansion joints in correctly, the width that they recommend and the width that you're supposed to put in, and Jack, you probably can speak to this, but if you put it in correctly, then you don't have that issue with the Street Creep.
Because I know some cities were cutting out a six-inch wide part and they'd fill it back up with clean rock and it would give a cushion per se. That's how I was told how it works.
You know, when I asked, when Terry brought this up, I was like, why are we doing this? This isn't our fault. But it, I mean, it is a courtesy service because there's really, you know, and, and the city's interest is you really don't want people cutting our street to put a expansion crack in without the expertise. So, if we do it and we know it's done to a certain specification, it's done correctly and we can also track where we've done it, you know?
Answer your question?
No. Again, it just, the way it reads and, and logic says that it's not going to be a saw kerf cut, it's going to remove six to 12 inches of existing concrete.
No, it's not six to 12 inches of concrete. That's the distance from the back of the curve. It's just a saw cut width.
Then why are they talking about the next line is removal of the existing concrete? And, and again, I just get back to, and you, if you were making a saw cut, you wouldn't then fill it in with asphalt, it wouldn't seem to me. I, I just don't think it's consistent with the policy that we, we passed a couple meetings ago regarding the culvert.
Well, we can certainly take it back to Guy and have him look at it and bring it back at a future meeting.
We're fixing people's driveways that weren't put in right to begin with then. That's what it is.
Yeah, basically, but it also keeps it from expanding on our street as well, so there is some mutual benefit.
And, and let me be clear again, because I'm, I use a lot of words, but I'm not always clear. I'm in favor of this. I just don't think it's consistent. I think that this, this does meet the city's needs, just like I think the other policy for, for replacing. I, I just want us to be consistent with our, with our policy on how we treat that.
Get it clarified.
Hey, counselor, so my understanding, like John reads, you go six to 12 inches behind the curve?
Right.
Up into the approach slab of the driveway?
Correct.
You make a saw cut, the full width of that particular slab, correct? Remove the concrete.
It's just the width of the saw cut.
But all the way across the driveway.
Right, all the way across the slab.
All the way across and you only remove the concrete of the saw, the width of the saw cut. You're not removing 12, six to 12 inches.
Right, because if you think about the expansion joint...
No, I know that. That's what I'm saying. And then you're just filling that in with asphalt.
Right, exactly.
So, you're essentially just making, not even probably three quarters to an inch.
Is that right, Jack?
If that's, if that ain't even an inch, are they?
And another option would be, once you saw cut it, put back a rod in and caulk over it. You have the same thing and it'd probably be a little easier than trying to get asphalt...
Like that felt expansion?
Yeah, just follow the back of the rod and you push that in it and then caulk over it and then that lets it breathe, lets it move.
If, if that is the, the intention, I, I don't have a problem with that. That's just not the, how the description reads to me. If, if they are going to make a saw kerf and, and fill that in with something to absorb that expansion, then I would agree that's a different animal than filling in behind a culvert replacement.
Well, I mean, I think what we can do is, you know, we can, I mean, Jack has a different suggestion that may be cheaper for the city to do as quality of a repair, but I mean, if you guys approve this, it is a change from our previous policy because our previous policy didn't have a lot of discretion with the city and I was concerned legally, you know, somebody would say, well, you know, you guys have to fix this and it's your responsibility. It wasn't clear whose responsibility the Street Creep was and really identifying it as a, as a courtesy, almost, you know, protecting the city property. So, if you guys approve this, we can take the concerns about the culvert and this and take those back to Guy and also maybe look to maybe describe this a little bit better and see if there's some better language.
That sounds like a resolution. I'm having a hard time to understand why the city would, would do something like this. Is it protecting our streets?
Yes.
As much as protecting the homeowners?
Right, because if there's no expansion joints, it's going to push against the foundation.
So, it benefits us?
Yeah.
So, it could be, okay.
Isn't that part of the code, when the building code, don't they have to have expansion joints in there?
We have improved our city standard specs over the last year and created a new section so we can hopefully try to avoid, but every city deals with Street Creep, whether it's someone who is installing their own driveway or doing their own concrete pad. When we looked at it, St. Peters has got a Street, St. Peters has got a Street Creep policy that we looked at.
It's really sidebar driveway creep.
It's really driveway creep, yeah. I would have to agree with you.
The ones we've encountered, correct me if I'm wrong, have been the older subdivisions. I don't think the newer subdivisions have done the last five years.
I've not seen any of those be the newer subdivisions.
Okay. Hey, John, what's your, what's your poison?
I'm looking for a motion?
Yeah. Yes, we are.
You want them separate or together?
You put them together.
Make a motion to approve the, and adopt the Street Creep policy as well as the stormwater management inspections policy.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Tallow, to approve the policies on Street, Street Creep and stormwater inspections. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flack?
Yes.
Motion carried, five, zero with one absent.
And the next I have for you is a request to repeal some unneeded policies. There are four of these. The incorrect water shut-off was contained in the policy you previously approved for shut-off procedures. The policy on load limit for dump trucks, load limits are addressed in our safety precautions and our safety policy, so not needed separately. We do not sell beer at the athletic complex any longer, so don't need a policy on that. And the zoning approval of the business location is part of a planning and zoning procedure. So, these are just obsolete policies, no longer needed. So these are just obsolete policies, no longer needed.
I make a motion to approve the repeal of policies of the incorrect water shut-off limit for dump trucks, beer sales at the athletic complex, and zoning approval of business locations.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Flake, to repeal the policies on incorrect water shut-off, policy on load limit for dump trucks, beer sales at the athletic complex, zoning approval of business locations. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes. Motion carried five zero, one eps.
And that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I've, what about operational updates?
I don't have anything.
Nothing to-
Nope, we got everything on the agenda this time.
Okay. We're gonna talk to the Planning and Zoning Director, Jack Hamp.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. We have a site plan revision approval request for revising the existing approved site plan to include three storm shelters out at the Villas in Hawthorne. They're requesting to put in three 12-foot by eight-foot by six-foot-four storm shelter units, some additional sidewalk and landscaping. If approved, the applicant will provide an updated as-built plan to show actual locations of the shelters. On May the 5th, the site plan was revised to allow additional lighting, and on August the 21st, the applicant received the board's approval for the addition of some, addition of a playground at the existing site. And I have in your packet the information they provided for what they're wanting to install out there.
So these are above ground?
Yes, sir. They sit on a concrete slab.
I guess I was in the impression they were below there.
I was too. How are they anchored down? What holds those, or what holds them in place?
They're bolted into the concrete.
Into the concrete.
Are there gonna be any kind of screening around these?
Uh, they-
I don't see any.
I don't see it. No, they have some, they got a little bit of landscaping, but I don't see any hedge or anything like that.
So this is something that the developer kinda takes upon himself to do? I mean, we certainly don't require anything like that.
Yes. Speaking with Tammy Creason from Gardendale Capital, though, this is one of the first projects they're looking at trying this, is trying to be proactive for additional safety on their sites. And that's why they pulled it off last, the last meeting was because they were trying to find if there would be a better system, because these are more like individual or smaller project shelters, where they could just have one, maybe larger one, but these were the, what they've considered the best fit that they could find for out there.
I'm assuming, will these things remain locked normally, so that you don't have vandalism and-
I believe so, and that was part of what they're in the process of trying to work out all the procedural bugs of, is the onsite maintenance guy gonna have the keys, or are the actual residents all gonna be issued a key to try to figure out the best use of them, to make sure people's not using them when it's not a stormy day?
Chief, what are your thoughts on this?
Just in terms of target. It's an easy target for vandalism, because, you know, basically a blank slate's in there for somebody to mark up and get into.
That's why I wonder if it's gonna be, yeah, screening around it, at least to-
Exactly.
Hide it. That's what I would recommend. I agree with you. It's just gonna be sitting out there.
Hey Phil, on that, here's a, gonna be a dwarf, albert, spruce, around that black area around there.
What part are you?
Oh, I see. Right here. Five-foot-wide mulch bed over weed berry with landscape edging and dwarf albert, albert spruce. Three foot on center.
There'll be screening around it.
And it'll be very-
Yeah, three-gallon trees, no?
This thing going in front of your head.
Uh, I don't know. Does P and Z look at this?
Yep. It's a modification site plan, so they can't apply directly to the board to review. Since the site plan's already approved, you guys can always make a motion to send it down to P and Z to review.
I don't know if I've got enough information really to make a good judgment call on this.
So this is the first one they've done? They wanna, this is more of an experimental thing?
That's my understanding, yes.
I mean, worst-case scenario is, I guess, if they had to pull them back out, and they leave the slab of concrete there, it would be about the main issue that I can see. I mean, I like the safety issue. I think that's a great concept, and, you know, protecting the tenants of the buildings and so forth, but-
Is there any mechanism, if these do become targets to vandalism, spray painting, is there any mechanism in the city to where we can make them-
Get rid of public nuisance and deal with it through a nuisance ordinance, but you guys do have the ability, I mean, I'm sure planning and zoning would give them plenty of feedback on it. If you guys decided to send it down there, give them their review.
I like that.
I would. I'd like to do that.
Would you want us to go back to planning and zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah. Props to the property managers up for adding lighting and adding storm shelters and trying to improve their property.
The playground, I think, is a real asset. I think that's a great idea.
We're gonna send it back and let P and Z look at it, Jack.
Okay, I will inform them and get it on the next meeting, then I can-
And that's a main concern, I think, what the board is saying is, might be a target for vandalism and might create other problems, so see what they say about it.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
That's it?
And also stress, you know, if they do approve it, that's great, but I think they need some kind of screening other than what they're showing, because that's not a very good description, I think, of what they wanted to do, at least from my viewpoint. Thank you.
I understand.
Thank you, Karen. Chief Hottashell, what do you got for us?
Good evening, Mayor, Board. I left at your places tonight a letter that I received from the Warren County Emergency Service Director, which is an update to the mules' entry dilemma that we got into several months ago. It says, a review, what they suggested as a, to deal with a budgetary problem that they had and a liability issue that they perceived, was to charge all of the law enforcement agencies a pro-rata amount, our amount was gonna be ninety-five hundred dollars, something like that, to do our mules' work, so the computer entries across the board annually. Since then, a couple of the board members and the mayor attended a couple of meetings. As a result of that, they started doing some internal searching and discovered that they could actually handle the mules' warrant entries, which is really the bulk of the work, and came back with this compromise and suggested that the police departments, or sheriff's department, as it were, handled their own article entries. So that would be things like missing stolen guns, license plates, stolen cars, things like that, which the number of existing entries right now is somewhere around two-hundred and thirty for us. So it's not, not a whole lot of work. I think the general consensus amongst the department heads and the law enforcement community is that this is a workable solution. You know, yes, it pushes a little bit of work our way, but it's not an overwhelming amount. Our records clerks can handle that fairly easily. So really, my recommendation is to accept their proposal to do this.
If I read that right, then I ask them for any kind of monetary solution either, right?
Right.
Chief, do we currently, the city, maintain a mules' terminal?
We don't have a mules' terminal, but we have access to Regis, so that in turn gives us access to mules and interfaces directly to mules.
Will it increase our cost?
It has the potential to increase our costs a little bit. I don't think we ever get anywhere near the data plan, near maxing out our data plan as it stands. So that's, I'm gonna take kind of a wait-and-see look at that. I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna involve any extra cost as far as the data.
And how many, who would be doing these entries?
It would be the records clerks, so the three ladies that work in front of that.
So what happens if my car or gun is stolen on, except Friday evening at five o'clock? Does it wait till Monday?
No. Warren County Emergency Services said that on those need 'em right now type entries, they would do those for us.
And what is classified as need 'em right now?
Well-
After hours?
And we haven't, yeah, we haven't actually worked out the details of that yet, but I see, you know, stolen gun, a stolen car, things that really are top priority, that need to get into the computer right now, so we'll put those in. Again, we need to hash out those details, but-
And then my understanding is, there is a ten-minute response. Who's gonna maintain those, those entries?
There's a ten-minute response requirement on hits on people.
But not on items?
No.
So who, again, if there is a needed response on a Saturday?
Those. They're, they're, they're very open to handling all of that.
But, but I guess my question is, if the entry is done here, my understanding is documents stay wherever it's entered. How do they verify that it's stolen if they don't have the-
Right. They'll have to call one of our officers to come in off the street and verify the actual physical paper presence for that. It's not, it's really not a big deal. You know, back in the day, they maintained all of our own warrant entries. When I was over in St. Louis County, a small meeting over there, officer just came in off the street, checked to make sure the warrant was there, called dispatch, let them know, and they sent the hit confirmation. So I'm not really gonna add a huge amount of work to it.
The two-hundred and thirty entries you're talking about, that's an annual amount?
Those are the, those are the number of entries that are pre-existing, so those will actually come over and we'll take physical possession of those. Annually, I think we do sixty, seventy, somewhere like that. It's really not a-
Not that big a deal. Anything else for the chief?
I, I would, I would certainly like to see some of this worked out. That does seem like a workable resolution. I would certainly like to see some of those details put in writing. I think that we're in the position we are, because things weren't done in writing, things weren't documented as to whose responsibility certain tasks were. So I would like to see that boiled down into a, just what we talked about, that they're gonna enter in what qualifies as the hot item. So it looks like we're moving in the right direction, I guess.
We are, indeed. Anything else?
All right.
Thanks for your work on this issue. I think had people like, had people like you and sheriff's department and the other municipalities, had they not came forward and addressed this issue, I think it would've just been a done deal. We would've all got a bill, and so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Economic Development Director, Michelle Slinter.
Good evening. We should have my economic development update in there. And as you see, attended another Warren County Economic Development meeting. They are looking to do a quarterly, a quarterly meeting, and that way individuals who are members can bring a non-member and can find out what is going on. And here's some updates as far as what the group is doing, which would be a good thing for them. They are still working on their 501(c)(6), having some issues with that, but hope to work through that. Have a real estate committee and some other items going on, marketing committee, and they're looking to do co-marketing with Montgomery County, and they're looking to increase their budget a little bit, approximately thirty thousand dollars to increase for some items that they've added, accounting, post office box, planning and design for marketing, existing business work group, and some miscellaneous items. As we all know, you have to have miscellaneous, because you never know what's gonna come up, especially with this being their first year. So they also have a newsletter out there that you can sign up for and get the newsletter if you would like. Is there any questions in regard to the economic development update?
Are they getting close to releasing some public information on which in the works?
They have not sent anything out yet.
Not yet.
I would like to add that we did receive our tree resources improvement grant, our term grant, so that is on the CV for the mayor to sign with. And the next thing I have for you is an update in reference to the lights on Highway 47. We had a pre-construction meeting on Monday. Brad, Guy, myself, MoDOT, our engineers, were there along with some utilities, and we received okay from MoDOT to continue. So again, this evening, I actually had the notice to proceed for the mayor to sign. The engineer, I'm sorry, the contractor has ordered the lights, and the lights should be coming in. They have a twelve-week wait, but they've ordered them, and he would like to start on the project October 1st, and that would give them time to start trenching and getting things ready, so that when the lights come in, they are ready to go to set the lights.
Good.
Long time to come.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be a good addition to the city. Anything else, Michelle?
That is all I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, Grounds and Maintenance Director, Brad Fuzicru.
Good evening, Mayor. I have tonight, did tabs for the parking lot A gate repair out at the Athody Complex. We're having problems with the, with the gate. When it was originally installed, the corner posts were a little undersized, and we need to beef them up to eight-inch to, or, it's gonna be six and seven, or six and five-eighths, I guess, is what, is what we're going with for that forty-foot gate. The three-inch was just not big enough. When it was originally installed, we're having problems keeping them up. So the recommendation from all the fence companies was to go with the bigger, bigger corner posts, the next post end that the gate actually hangs on, plus more bracing in it. And this is, my recommendation is go with KDG here in town for twelve hundred dollars.
Is a question-
It's coming out of the capital sales tax, correct, Karen?
Correct.
Because it wasn't budgeted.
It was not budgeted, and it will have to come from the contingency line item.
I'll make a motion to go with the recommendation, Grounds and Maintenance Director, to go with KDG Fence, to repair the lot A gate for an amount of twelve hundred dollars.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Cornell, to approve the parking lot A gate repair at the athletic complex, and award the bid on KDG Fence an amount of twelve hundred dollars. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one eps.
Let me stay all set out with the low bid of three bids.
Yes. Okay. Is that all you have, Brad?
That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Next item, I'm at item fourteen. We have some bills to convert over to ordinances, and the first item under is bill number forty-three twelve for first reading.
Call for the first reading of bill number forty-three dash twelve.
Second. Motion made by Alderman- Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Clark, for first reading of Bill 43-12.
An ordinance to annex an unincorporated area located west Veterans Memorial Parkway into the city of Borton, Missouri without further action.
Call for second final reading and passage of Bill Number 43-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer, for second and final reading of Bill Number 43-12.
An ordinance to annex an unincorporated area located at west Veterans Memorial Parkway into the city of Borton, Missouri without further action.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one eps. Bill Number 44-12.
Call for the first reading of Bill Number 44-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Tallow, for Bill Number 44-12.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute cooperative agreement between the Missouri Department of Conservation and the city of Borton, Missouri for the term grant.
Call for second final reading and passage of Bill Number 44-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer, for second and final reading of Bill Number 44-12.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute cooperative agreement between the Missouri Department of Conservation and the city of Borton, Missouri for the term grant.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one eps. First, or call for first reading of Bill Number 45-12.
Call for first reading of Bill Number 45-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Clark, for first reading of Bill Number 45-12.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute applications to be submitted to the Missouri Department of Transportation, the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, and the Missouri Transportation Financing Committee, in order to participate in cost-share programs and financing options for the financing of certain transportation improvements within the city, and providing further authority.
Call for second and final reading and passage of Bill Number 45-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake, for second and final reading and passage of Bill Number 45-12.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute applications to be submitted to the Missouri Department of Transportation, the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission, and the Missouri Transportation Financing Committee, in order to participate in cost-share programs and financing options for the financing of certain transportation improvements within the city, and providing further authority.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one eps. At this time, unless someone has something else they want to bring up, I'll enter the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to adjourn, all of whom favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close likewise. Motion carried five zero, one eps.